Aye.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of the meeting has been satisfied in accordance with chapter two thirty-one, PL nineteen seventy-five, by advertising in the home news Tribune, notifying the Sentinel Publishing Company and the Star Ledger, and also posting on the bulletin board and filing with the borough clerk. Roll call.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Here.
Mr. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Emma?
Here.
Mr. Bella?
Here.
Mrs. Gottstein?
Here.
Mr. Castle Grant?
Here.
Ms. Gerson?
Here.
The first case tonight is sixteen dash twelve, which is Clyde Auto Recycling, six thousand Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to point out, I spoke with the applicant's counsel on this case. They advised me that they'd like to come back to the board's June meeting to discuss this matter, given that they weren't actually aware that today was the meeting date until a couple days ago. And there are some other outstanding issues related to the legal complexities with this particular extension, so they'd like some additional time to prepare. So this isn't technically an application under the MLUL, so no notice was required. So they didn't need to notice before, they don't need to notice now. So that's the spiel on that one.
So all we're going to do is schedule it for June, and you're going to notify the attorneys and all parties involved.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to do that. The next case is twenty-four dash oh six, Archer Capital LLC, River Road.
Similar story with that one, Mr. Chairman. I spoke with the applicant's counsel on that a couple days ago, and they advised me that they would be making some pretty significant changes to their proposal. And as such, they weren't prepared to proceed tonight and would like to present the board with the ultimate correct final proposal at the board's June meeting date. I will note for the record that I did review their notice. They noticed for this evening. I found both the content and timeliness of service of that notice to be sufficient to give the board jurisdiction. Thus, in my legal opinion, the board could carry that matter by voice announcement tonight without requiring the applicant to renotice either by mail or in the newspaper. So if that's okay with the board, I can make the formal announcement and we can proceed.
Board okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we need a vote on that, or yes is enough?
We don't necessarily need a vote, but I think it's just unanimous consent of board members. So with that, and I believe it is unanimous consent to carry, yes? I don't see anybody saying no. Okay, so this is the formal announcement. If you're here for the Archer Capital LLC application that's on River Road, that matter is going to be carried to the board's June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meeting, seven thirty PM here in the Township Municipal Building. No further notice will be required. Again, as I stated previously, the notice was good for tonight, so the board has jurisdiction over the case and they can carry the matter without any further notice being required.
Hey. The next case is twenty-four dash oh five. I apologize, I'll have a little trouble with the first and last name of this person. It's twenty-five Campbell Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I will also just point out for the record, I reviewed their notice. I found it to be sufficient as to its content and the timeliness of service of it. So in my legal opinion, the board has jurisdiction over this case. All right, sir. I'm going to need you to raise your hand, I got to swear you in. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any other witnesses, any other people who are going to be speaking this evening?
Yes, Ms. Sue.
Okay.
She will help.
Okay, let's get you. Okay. Yes, I will swear. Suzanne, if you wouldn't mind, yeah. I got to swear you in too.
Absolutely.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? And also that any translation you're going to do will be also the whole, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so you're the applicant's translator, correct?
Do we need her name?
Yes.
Do we need her name?
Need her name?
Yes.
Oh, Suzanne Proudie.
Okay, so.
I mean, he speaks fluent English, it's just sometimes some verbiage he doesn't quite get.
You give her her name again?
Sure.
What was your first name again, I'm sorry?
Suzanne.
Suzanne Proudie? Okay, gotcha. And sir, I'm assuming your name is Sayeed Dador? Is that pronounced correctly?
I have two first names.
Okay, I gotcha. You're the owner of twenty-five Campbell Drive?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so why don't you tell us why you're here?
From beginning, like, existing my shed, it was on proper line between Mr. George and that behind, behind me, who just located, I forget his names. It wasn't right on proper this line, the shed, it was literally like falling down. Now I have a pictures, now all this information. Before this thing is fall down, I just think, let me just make it better for my neighbors and for myself to just move the shed a little bit further up front and a little bit make it bigger. The main reason, I have a two big reasons to make some space for my kids, for my nephews, because usually when we have some holiday, they coming our to ours house. That's me, my mother, my nephews, we have a total nine. And so when they coming, it's literally in the house, we don't have a space to keep them together. Something is breaking each time. I was like, let me just make some space, what way can have some fun with my family and we can stay together. Instead of breaking, if someone's get hurt, we have some space over there. And second biggest reason is, when I have a holiday, we have a twenty guests, as usual, but because of our religion, we cannot sit like women's and men's together in one place. We have to somehow try to keep them separately, because it's not right in our religion, when it's like, when now there's someone's vibes, like see to each other, like eye line. That's why we trying to keep them separate always. Because every, yeah, that's why when I have some holiday, something, some birthday and things happen, I have to just make it outside, some space for the men's where we can stay and women stay inside. Like, not always whether it's good or middle of something, rain or something starting. Maybe in this moment, I can able to have it some place where I can keep, you know, my guest even a little bit cover space where I'm.
I got a question I want to ask you. I want to make sure I understand this. You had a shed up there before?
Yes.
And you took it down?
Yes, sir.
And you put this new one up?
Yes, sir.
Did you get a permit to put this shed up?
No, I didn't even know. I have to get through all this because it's happened like literally too fast. I call my couple of friends and I asked them, what are you thinking about it? Say it, look at this, it just literally fall down. In a couple of days, we just, my old friends, we just take it down. Literally in a couple of days, they helped me to put it together. I didn't even know. I have to get permit, because I thought when I'm putting shit, like existing shit where it was located and how it was, because of the condition, what I'm doing, like trying to help out my nephew, prove it, yeah, make it better for my neighbors and for myself. I didn't, I don't have any permits, no.
You didn't get any permits on it. How long did it take you to put this shed up? It's already there, correct?
Yeah. Weekend, yeah.
A weekend?
Weekends. All my friends, they coming, and one weekends, we just put together everything.
It's a woodshed?
Yes, sir. It's a woodshed.
Do you know that Jersey Central Power and Light Company has easements on your property? Do you know that?
When I start getting signs from my neighbors about, I forget the name of the same, the signs, my letter about my couple neighbors, they make it rebuild, they put new sheds behind me. I mean, same on the same line property. And they actually, they told me, after that, I just get notes, I have a power line where it's getting true. And Jersey line, sometime they have to get back to do some work, I'm not sure exactly. They actually give me some information about, I have some power lines going.
I want to ask you also about, I'm looking at your map here that you gave us.
Yeah.
And it has a above-the-ground pool there.
Yes, sir.
How long has that been up there?
Mr. George, I'm sorry, this is my neighbor, he know better than me. Probably that pool we have fifteen years or more. My pool.
Sir, if he's going to testify, I need to swear him.
Ah, I'm sorry. Okay.
I mean, it's fine, you can bring him up, I'll swear him in if he wants to come in.
This is my next door, my neighbor who always help me out, Mr. George.
All I want to know is how long that pool has been there?
I don't know. If you want to, yeah, I just purchased three years ago.
Oh, when you moved in, it was there?
Yes, sir.
And the same pool is still there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that's.
And when did you move in?
When did you move in?
Three years ago. Twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty September, yes, sir.
So you're living in this house where you're at now about three years?
Mm-hmm.
And that pool has been there for three years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, I don't need to hear from him now. It's okay, thank you. Board members have any questions concerning this?
I'm going to correct it, everything what I have to know. I know, right now, I know I make a big mistake before, before set up the paperwork to putting the shed down in that place where it is right now. I will do forever, I needed to fix it, make it corrected, improve all the right things, get past to this. I just like.
These are overhead power lines? There's overhead power lines over the back of your property?
Or they're underground? They're overhead, they're not on the, oh, they're not on the ground, okay, good.
Your testimony is that they're overhead?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I can.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand what is in your head.
Thing is, if anybody, if you're going to say anything, I need to have you sworn.
I'm sorry.
Appreciate, your neighbor's trying to, you know, give us some information.
Sure.
I'm trying to deter him, but again, I got it, it's got to come from you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll clarify for the board. This lot is approximately two hundred feet deep. The back two hundred feet is covered by a Jersey Central power line easement, and there are two overhead, a series of two overhead wires that run across that hundred-foot wide Jersey Central easement area. In the past, there have been applications submitted to the board that proposed improvements under the power lines, and this board required Jersey Central to review and concur with what was being proposed. So that's an issue this board should address with this application to make sure that you're not approving something that Jersey Central, who has an easement where he wants to build this, you want to make sure that they're in concurrence with what he's looking to do.
Do you understand what our engineer just said?
Almost.
Okay. I'll try and clarify it for you.
Thank you.
You can't go any further with this.
Sure.
We're not going to hear the approval or the disapproval of your shed. What you're going to have to do, you're going to have to go to Jersey Central Power and Light and get approval, because you have the power lines there. And they have to approve it first. When they approve it, then they come back, you bring it back to us. And then we'll hear the case, but we can't go any further with it. But no more work. You don't have a permit to do it as of now, so you have to stop for now. We'll hear your case, your entire shed that you have there, after we get the approvals or what Jersey Central has. You understand that?
Yes, sir.
So sir, with that, what you're hearing from the board is they don't feel comfortable with proceeding to vote on your application until they have some kind of, I don't want to say guarantees, but something from JCP and L that says that you're allowed to have the structures or whatever. Right? So with that, I think what the board's requesting is that grant us some additional time. Well, that we have some additional time to act, yeah.
Fine, all right. Thanks so much for your.
Well, hold on.
And when you get a hold of Jersey Central Power and Light, we're asking you to please get in touch with the zoning board and keep us advised of exactly what the progress is on this, okay? So when you find out yes or no from Jersey Central Power and Light, then we can reschedule you or do whatever we have to do.
All right.
Okay?
Yes, yeah. Couple housekeeping items we need to take care of before we let you go, sir.
Thank you.
First off, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be a good idea to give members of the public an opportunity to ask questions or comment in case the applicant wants to make some changes based on public feedback. So with that, are there any members of the public who want to either ask questions of this witness or provide any kind of sworn comment on this application before we adjourn it? Going once, going twice, going three times, okay. No members of the public duly noted for the record. All right, sir, so what, I think we have to perhaps have a little bit of discussion about when we're going to reschedule you to, because you're still on our docket and we have to, you know, have things scheduled. Initially, I think we spoke, and I know our June meeting's open, but it may take you a little bit longer to get that JCP and L approval. So I guess this is a discussion for the board, how, maybe two months, three months?
Jay, last time, it took quite a while.
It did, that I would say was probably over a year it took a previous application. They had a lot more encroachments they were dealing with. So maybe, but what you did, Mr. Vice Chairman, was you had, I think, given them a couple month extension, then they would follow up and say, well, we've been progressed, we don't have an answer yet. Then you gave them a couple months' extension. That's how you kind of walked through it with them. So they kept you advised as to the status and you extended it. So as was indicated, maybe you start with a sixty-day extension to your July meeting, see what happens. You report back and let us, if you're ready to go for July, they can continue July. If not, you can let the secretary know the progress and at the July meeting, they might be able to carry you for another thirty days or sixty days, whatever is appropriate.
Thanks so much.
It wasn't the applicant's fault, it was the power company. They're not that responsive.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah, it's not the highest priority on their list. And the other thing, so if this does go for quite a while, should we renotice, because how are people going to know?
Yes, so in this situation, as I stated at the beginning of the hearing, the applicant's notice I found to be sufficient to get the board jurisdiction. So there's two avenues at this point. Either A, you can renotice and have to send notices to everybody all over again, or B, we can just carry it by voice announcement, much like we did with the Archer Capital application. That way, he doesn't have to go through that process again. And by virtue of him having noticed for this evening, anybody who would have had an interest in the application was made aware that these proceedings were happening. And if they were really that interested, they would have shown up this, tonight, and they would thus be aware that thing was going to be carried to July. Does that make sense?
If it goes for a long time, how are they supposed to?
I think that's what happened with the prior application you're referring to. I think you gave them a couple extensions, there was no end in sight. So then you had, you made them renotify after just a couple extensions. So you don't necessarily have to keep granting extensions. You can give them a certain time period and then say, we want to have them, make sure the residents are aware of this application, so then you renotify at that point. But initially, you may want to just grant, like we talked about a sixty-day, and see where it goes from there.
My advice would be, given that it's only a two-month break between this evening and the next hearing on this, I think a simple voice announcement is fine at this point. If we're going six, eight months, you know, getting further down the line, then it would probably be a better idea to have the applicant renotice, as they did the first time.
We're going to make it two months from now.
Sounds fine to me. Okay.
We'll put you on the July agenda, but keep us advised.
I'm going to be in touch with Joan.
Just keep us advised of the progress with the extension, okay?
I will, thanks so much.
And how big is the easement on the power lines?
It's a hundred feet wide. So I say, he's got a two-hundred-feet-deep lot.
My existing.
It's the entire width, it's the entire width of the lot, but it's across the back hundred feet. So two-hundred-deep lot, first hundred feet has no easement, the last hundred feet has Jersey Central power lines going over top of it.
It appears like the one easement line is right on the property line, more or less.
Correct.
Very close, very close to the property line.
It shows, correct, it shows on the survey that it runs from the back property line, which is where the shed is, to where the, into his concrete patio closer to the house. That's the hundred feet. If you look closely at the survey, you could see what, there's arrows that show a hundred-foot-wide Jersey Central easement.
This would be for a shed, a pool, like an extension onto the house?
Well, it's really a Jersey Central issue, but my understanding is that they don't allow permanent structures within their easement or right-of-way. So the application on Boardent Town Avenue that was discussed, they had proposed an addition, and Jersey Central would not allow it. They had proposed parking, I think they wanted to put pavers down to allow buses to park. Jersey Central did allow that. In this case, I don't know the shed, if, because of the size, if the Jersey Central will consider that a permanent structure. If it was an eight-by-ten shed that you could possibly move, they may say that's okay. But something that's almost eight hundred square feet, they may have some concerns with. So that's why really Jersey Central needs to review that and decide what the magnitude is.
I'm only asking this because I think we have the same issue with the next application.
You do. Yep, and that's going to come up on the next one, yep.
A little preview for the next application.
And the thing with this is it's seven hundred and ninety-nine square feet.
The existing shed is approximately three hundred and sixty, and this is proposed at approximately eight hundred.
Just for the record, that would be written documentation from Jersey Central we would need to proceed?
That's what was received last time. Actually, as I indicated, Jersey Central allowed certain things and they prohibited other things. And there was a document they provided that said that, and the board, I think, referenced that in their resolution that was adopted.
Oh, you understand completely. You're going to get a hold of Jersey Central Power and Light Company? They're probably going to, absolutely going to come out to the house and they're going to look, and then they're going to make a decision. How long it takes, that's what you're going to have to let us know.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
And Jay, just one last thing. Do you have like a number or who they should contact, just to help the applicant out?
I can probably, on that Boardent Town Avenue application, I could probably get some contact information. You're not going to call the person you would call to come for a power outage, right? They have a real estate division, and I think that's who eventually was contacted. So I can see if I can find that information, I can maybe pass it to Joan, and Joan, you can reach out to Joan.
Thanks so much for it, I appreciate it.
Before I make the announcement, we carry it, two things. Number one, does anyone have any further questions, anything they want to bring up before we break? No? Okay, good. Second, similar type of question, I suppose. Given the applicant's going to have to come back anyway, does anybody have anything related to the proposal itself that they would want to have the applicant address? Either, you know, any concerns about the size of the structure, the setbacks, anything like that? Anything that they might want to consider the next time around? I think it would be a good idea to give them, the applicant, an opportunity to make some changes if.
The existing is approximately three hundred and sixty, about ten by thirty-six. They're proposing approximately eight hundred square feet. And there are four other variances. So the size of the structure, one hundred fifty square feet's required, they're proposing eight hundred. The rear yard setback is supposed to be five, they're proposing three. Side yard setback for the rear, five, they're proposing three. Building coverage between the house and the structure is supposed to be twenty percent, they've got twenty-five. And the last is the overall impervious coverage, supposed to be forty-five, they have forty-seven. As the applicant indicated, he is making the rear yard and side yard variance better than they currently are, because that existing shed basically sits on the back property line and the side property line. So he's proposing to move that three feet away, but still, it doesn't meet the five foot required by the ordinance.
Are they opening a can of worms here? It just, if they call JCP and L and they see this pool, is that pool underneath these wires at all? They say remove that pool.
That's a possibility.
Careful of that.
But I believe that, I believe there are other houses in the area where their pools are located. So Jersey Central may consider a pool not a permanent structure, because they wouldn't probably allow an in-ground pool, but if it's an above-ground pool, they may allow it, because it could be taken down if necessary. So that's really Jersey Central's call.
I think regardless of whether or not, you know, the applicant was bringing this application, if that thing, if the pool's an easement that it's not permitted to be in, JCP and L would always have the right to, you know, try to have it removed. So.
But if it was never approved, now maybe be the time to get it approved in conjunction with your shed. That way you know everything is covered.
On that front, I hate to open up another can of worms, but the the pool, we know it's existed for a while. Do we know if a permit was ever issued for it? Because if you're coming in for the shed, if there's any variance relief that might be related to the pool, I think it would be a good time to, you know, have that incorporated here as well. We don't know? Nope, no permits? No permits were, okay, we don't. No?
Exactly.
We don't believe any permits were issued, okay. You might want to have the zoning officer take another look at this, knowing that. I don't think, my assumption is that he included, because the pool was on the survey that you guys submitted, that the pool would be included in the building and impervious coverage calculations. That was my concern, because if the pool wasn't included in that, that you'd be probably proposing, you know, a higher level of relief than forty-seven and twenty-five is right. So I want to follow up with the zoning officer on that too, just to get that question answered.
Mr. Chairman, one other point. So this application is for a shed, but the testimony was that it's for a playroom or to be used by people? Well, I'm just, so is there a planning issue? And Jay, I know you're not a planner, and our planner's not here, but is there, you see any issue on that? Or the attorney can also.
As I understand it, it's basically a shed that has an adjacent kind of overhead roof structure that somebody can stand under. So if you could, I guess compare it to a gazebo, but it's attached to a shed.
It's an accessory structure.
It's still an accessory structure. There, it's part of the coverage variances that you're already dealing with, it's part of the setback variances you're dealing with. But from a permitted use standpoint, I don't think it's an issue.
The way it's used is not matters, it's just how it exists.
Correct. It's not a, I think it was, there's not going to be utilities, no water, no sewer. It's not a business-type use, it's really just for a covering area.
Existing lights, the same lights is going to be there, there's two light boxes.
You have electric in it, correct?
It was there, yeah, existing electric.
There's electric in it already?
And that spot, and that new ones right there?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, from old one, I just bring it, instead of living on the floor, I just brought the inside.
Oh, in other words, you just moved it from the old one to the new one?
Yeah, inside the new shed.
There's electric, but it's not occupied, it's not going to be occupied. It's basically a storage shed.
I mean, I don't have to bring a new power lines to dig the floor and like that, because existing owner, he did everything from inside the floor, the tube, everything's coming like the way have supposed to, because he bring the light and power into the pool and so with the same place, he just continued to go into the shed.
The shed is used for storage.
Yeah.
That's the purpose. So it's a storage shed with an adjacent overhead area for gathering.
Yes, sir.
And you say it's also a playroom, correct?
Yes, sir.
What do you mean by that?
Protect all the, yeah, protect all the walls, make sure no one get hurts, because each time when some nephews is coming to my house, one of them get hurt, really hurt, luckily, sometimes it's not. Because of the corner of the cabinets, aquarium, kitchen falling down. One day from second floor stair, he just jumped down. It was like surprise for me. That my holiday finished with the hospital. I said, I can't take it anymore, this. I cannot say don't come to our house, because grandmother, grandfather is here. This way, when gas is coming, I can able to just have them together, everything in one place and let the adults stay like a little bit in quietness, nice, enjoy the time we've been together. Because not every day you can just be together all entire family. Like two or three holidays, we have it, big holiday, when really we have a lot of like people who coming to see each other.
So will, will they be eating? Will they be eating in there, drinking in there? Will there be a TV or anything like that?
I don't need it.
They will be actually in the shed for long periods of time, so I don't know if that's just storage.
Tons of toys, where I have two bedrooms right on full of those toys. So literally, I don't have a space, we just walking like this, because it's storage, storage, storage of these toys. And we're just. I don't know the winter time. Winter time, we not gonna able to get there. Winter time, even we not gonna able to go there, because we have a snow or they can able to like enjoy the moment outside of the water.
Would it be fair to say that the primary purpose of that structure is for storage?
Storage, yes, sir. That's what it came for.
The issue that I'm concerned about, you have fifty feet of property line, and that covers about forty-two feet going across.
Not only that, instructor is a house, probably about eight foot. I just extend the roof to just, you know, to clean the machines, to just, I can able to put it under one word, all the snow cleaning, everything I can able to.
You know, I would call it quite larger than a shed. It's very big, it covers almost the whole back of your property.
I can just cut off that roof and remove it completely, that part of the roof, like, it's going to be, yeah, make it smaller. Yeah, make it smaller because in the paper, when I spoke to Edward, he said, no matter how much is the roof, that much is the covers is current and spacing. Now over there, almost eight foot, it just that open space and you can literally walk because two posts on the sides, it just open space completely. Just the roof extended. I can just cut off and take out that roof. This shed is gonna be, instead of 47, it's gonna be 38. Existing it was 35.
So what you're saying is that you'll modify this as, as whatever we say. No problem with that.
Part, anything, whatever we like to. I can remove it from where, yes, sir.
Quite a clarification, first few things. Number one, the roof of this structure. What's below that extended roof? Is it just dirt? Okay, okay. All right. Well, yeah, we're not deciding tonight, but that's something for the board to consider. Potentially requiring him to maybe cut off the roof edge, bring down the.
Even make it nicer to my neighbor. I didn't make a pitch to that. I make a pitch once and make sure everything, no matter what I have going into my house, instead of like as before, no matter what I have in my roof, half of going into my neighbor's roof, neighbor's house yard. And like literally he see it how his damage, his structure, his shed what he have it. Yeah, his fence, everything was destroyed completely through that roof. Right now I make it to one side, even we have a clear space when I can keep clean always. And those big raccoons, I hope I'm gonna get rid of them. Because those big raccoon, there was literally entire family was inside that shed.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask him to bring in pictures of this?
You beat me to the punch. I was just about to bring that up. Yeah.
I have existing.
I don't, if you do that, I gotta take your phone because then it's an exhibit. Next time when you come back in July, bring some pictures, give the board an idea of what this thing looks like. Certainly, if, what I was trying to get to before, if we were to require him to chop off that extended roof, that would bring down his coverage calculations a little bit. Might even get him to, probably not, but it might get him very close to the permitted thresholds. So.
Thank you.
In addition, we also want to confirm that the height is less than 15 because the accessory structure, that's a maximum of the lot.
The height of the structural is lower than 15, yeah. But because of one front of, front point of my yard, it's higher when you go into like, literally you walk like a five, six step and it's going literally going down, going down completely. But I just make, yeah, building is not changing. When you walking, you can see just you going down, the building going higher. Height of the building is same.
So when, when you get an opportunity, if you will, take those pictures and drop them off at the zoning office, and they will make copies of them, and we'll take it from there.
Actually, two officers gentlemen, they are show up couple days ago, yesterday probably in my house.
Yes, I'm one of them that did show up. I did show up, but I didn't take pictures.
That's what they told me. Came to take a picture to see what we, about what we gonna talk about like tomorrow's meeting. I said, okay, no problem.
Myself and, 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 we were there, and we saw what you're doing, or what you have there, but we did not take pictures.
Sure, okay.
If you'll do that for the rest of the board, we appreciate that.
All right.
And if you could, please submit them at least 10 days in advance of July.
Of course, yeah.
At the mark as an exhibit, makes it a little bit easier. Board gets to look at it before.
Sure.
July 24th?
One more question. If I can able to set up the papers later, or there is a possibility to move the meeting there further or not?
Once, once we make that voice announcement, you gotta come back that day, otherwise the board will have to dismiss.
No problem. Thank you so much for it.
I think two months is a good starting point. I think that's board's opinion. I don't want to speak for them, but.
Okay.
Seems to be, might upset the apple part of that. Okay. Anything further from board members before I make the announcement? Anything further from you, sir? Anything else you want to say or do before we call it a night on this? Okay, all right. With that, I will make the formal announcement. This matter is going to be carried to the board's July 24th, 2024 meeting, 7:30 PM here in the Sayerville Municipal Building. As I stated previously, the applicant provided sufficient notice to give the board jurisdiction over this case. So at this point, no further notice either by being published in the newspaper or being sent by certified mail to adjacent property owners or nearby property owners, I should say, will be required. So that's it, sir. We'll see you back in July.
Thank you.
Next case is 24-07. Stephen, and I pronounce this correctly, Boshner, 49 Calliope. Okay, thank you.
All right, sir. I'm assuming you're Stephen Bowler?
It would be me.
Okay, you reside at 49 Calliope Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna need you to swear again?
Yep.
Okay, do you, actually, before I do that, is there anyone else who's gonna be testifying on your behalf tonight?
Nobody.
Nobody? Just you? Okay, lone gunman here. All right. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So I hope you got.
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. Go ahead, tell us why you're here, sir.
Been a resident, 24 years in town. I collect antique cars. It's a hobby of mine. I've done since I was a kid. I don't do the repairs, maintenance, all that crazy stuff. Looking for more room to put some cars. The garages on my, on the houses aren't convenient to hold a 1966 Chevy pickup truck with an eight-foot bed. To be able to pull it in and out easily, I just recently removed a 24-foot above-ground pool that was deeded on my property from when I bought the home. The garage I'm looking to put up is basically, garage is gonna have a 10-foot door opening. I'm gonna have four windows on it, gonna extend the soffits to make it look uniform where my house. A, it's a nice neighborhood. I don't want to throw one of those Shelter Logic tents up. It's, I'm looking for an 18 by 30, which is 540 square feet. I believe the ordinance is 250. 150. Okay, so obviously I'm looking for bigger, but the imprint of my new garage is gonna take up less of an imprint. And actually, where my above-ground pool was, I'm coming off the easement from Jersey Central Power and Light, which I believe everybody should have copies of my existing and my proposal, and then what was existing when I purchased the house 24 years ago. It's gonna be landscaped, it's Green Valley. I'm not gonna trash. I could drive through the town and pick you 100 places where people have sheds that are. Yep, and all I'm asking to do is have a place to get out of the sun, Calliope Road, you can see the color on me. Your barn standing in your driveway. I'm not at the age, no more where I could stand in my driveway to wash and wax my cars.
Let me ask, is the, is the pool already gone?
I've removed the pool.
Pool's gone.
Yep, and I originally was planning, you know, coming up with something. I didn't want to put anything on my pavement driveway as far as shed. I don't want oil. I don't want if something leaks or something. I built a beautiful home in 24 years. And I don't want to have an eyesore in my neighborhood. I wouldn't be happy if my neighbors did. Somebody put a dishing on down the road from me. Looks horrible.
Mr. Cornell, can you, can you give the board analysis of the Jersey Central Power and Light Company situation?
Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, we have the same issue that we did with the last application. This lot is 125 feet deep. The back 55 feet is encumbered by a Jersey Central easement. This lot actually has part of the tower located on the property. So I think the same concerns is will Jersey Central allow a permanent garage structure to be built underneath their power lines within their easement?
It's not actually gonna be under their power lines because I pulled it off. It's posted tell. I'm gonna match it up to my existing driveway where my pool, there was a space between my fencing and my deck to my pool, and then the pool was on easement according to what my documents show as far as my survey.
Sir, point of clarification. I believe what you might be referring to, there's also a 15-foot wide drainage easement in your rear yard. I think that might be the easement you're referring to, but when you say.
Yeah, again, I'm not an engineer, but.
So there's a 55-foot easement from your back property line, 55 feet towards your house. Actually, three feet of your, your house area is within that 55-foot Jersey Central easement.
So what do I do? I mean, yeah, I know, and I understand that. I mean, they come in my yard once or twice a year. I maintain the property underneath the tower. I've removed trees. I've done everything that could be done. I've had no problems with them.
You may go to them, and they may say we have no objection.
At this point, I, you know, I ain't gonna sit and fight and argue with, you know, Jersey Central. I don't know what the, you know, parameters are for everything, but it might just better off moving and getting, you know, I'm here 24 years. I got three daughters that live with me. What I'm looking to do is have a place to park a car. I'm not looking to put in a hell of a port.
Our, our issue is, is not so much your garage. Our issue is the law concerning the easement situation. We, we cannot make a decision on that until we get this easement situation straightened out because we have it in front of us.
And I notified them with a certified letter. I got the return card that they received it. Now, I, I don't know how it goes. Should somebody be here from them to say, hey, no, we're not doing this? Or, hey, red flags? And now what? I've already waited the time to get to this point. So now I gotta wait another four or five months, possibly, if not longer, to try to contact a big animal company. That, they don't care. They don't care what anybody does. I didn't care about my pool was there for 24 years, taking up a bigger footprint. My house is three feet on the easement. Where's it stop? I'm just trying to live and exist in Sayerville.
Goes through the application, given to the board, to the building garage, builds a garage, JCPN L can still come in and say, no, this has to be ripped down.
Well, it's gonna be a boltable, it's gonna be a boltable unit. So it will be able to be taken down as well as what a built-up pool was. It's not a wooden structure. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a metal structured garage. So it is capable to be removed or dismantled and not destroyed. So I'm not looking to build a foundation. I'm gonna put a slab on it, three and a half inches. I mean, I have a 24-foot round pool with a 15-foot deck. How much does 15,000 gallons of water weigh? You know, footprint is footprint, you know? And again, I'm 61 years old now. I'm not gonna look to fight the next two or three years in my life at this point over trying to build a garage. I wanted to do this years ago, but my kids were using the pool.
Can I ask a question? Maybe this might satiate everybody. What if you were to move the shed, well, the garage, I'm sorry. Also, to the front of the house, might require you to rip up some of the driveway.
I won't.
But it would be completely out of the easement, and it wouldn't be a concern for the board.
All right, but can I move the garage on to that a little bit? But the only thing is, is if you look at the structure and how it was set up, hey, I got my fencing there, my gate there. I got the back door into my, back of my house is right down the very end of my, to the driveway, which is in line with my curbing. I mean, I could move it up two, two feet. You know, and I like the suggestions. I can move it up, right up to my pavers. And if need take out a row or two of the pavers, absolutely. I don't have a problem with that.
Still gonna be in the easement. I'm just throwing that out there as a possible way to.
I love the suggestions. You know, I was told, you know, by the construction office that you guys come up with some pretty good stuff once in a while.
Our, our, our issue, our issue really is not the garage itself. It's the, it's the Jersey Central Power and Light. And we don't really have the authority to turn around at this point and say, yes, we, we, we need them to.
So put up the green Shelter Logic tent is the answer. So I'll save about $10,000 on putting up a tent and making an eyesore in my neighborhood.
Sir, you're still gonna run into the same issue because it's gonna be within that easement.
It's not permanent. I could.
What dictates is the terms of the easement. If the easement says you can have structures in here, and the easement holder says you can have structures in here.
But my pool was there. I got permits from the township to build the deck. I'm like really confused.
I can't speak to those.
No, I know. I'm just saying, I, I, me as a homeowner, I'm really super confused. I built the deck. I had a pool for 24 years. It's something I did when I bought the house. I'm like, I'm fluid. I'm actually, I'm feeling a little disgusted.
Was the pool, was the pool that you had there above the ground pool, it was?
Yes, it was.
Was there a permit for it?
It was there when I had the house. I had to get a permit when I redid the deck. It had an existing deck connected to the pool, but once I removed or started to do maintenance on my deck, I was required to get a permit and do the footings and go through the inspections and go through everything. So everything I've done on my house, I've been 100% on. And now I'm just like super confused. So I was able to put in pylons and build a deck and do all of that. Right? And build a deck on my house with permits on that easement, which is a lot harder to remove than a metal structure.
Did you have to come before the board?
Never.
See, that's kind of the issue here, because the board is deciding tonight is whether, well, not maybe not, maybe not tonight. What the board needs to decide is whether or not they're gonna give you a variance. That means it's a deviation from what the requirements of our local zone, right? So part of that analysis is that the board has to determine whether or not your project is gonna pose what's called a substantial detriment to the public good, meaning that they have to determine whether or not your project is gonna detrimentally impact any of your neighbors or any, really, the entire public, right? So in that calculus goes the consideration, okay, is it a detriment to the public if we permit a structure within an existing power line easement? The considerations could be that you're gonna interfere with the power company's ability to come in and maintain your equipment, which could impact electric service to other people, neighborhood, throughout the town, throughout the whole state.
Understandable.
So when you, before the board, it's a higher degree of, a higher burden of proof that you have to have. When you get a permit for something just through the permit office, that means you get it by right, meaning there's, you know, the law says you can have it, you can have it. What you're proposing here is against what the law says. Does this make sense? I'm hoping, I'm just trying to kind of relay why it's a different type of situation.
No matter, other than hearing a yes, nothing's gonna make sense tonight, you know? Just in all fairness, because I'm not looking, thinking I'm looking to do anything ridiculous that way. If I was to go and start building this thing and doing something. Obviously, people drive by my house, they could shut me down from doing it. You know, so I, I, I'm just really confused. You know, maybe it's time to tap out of town. And that is my alternative, and I did think about that.
Maybe the possibility is, is talk to Jersey Central. They might turn around and say, it's okay. And if they do, you come back here.
How do I even get in touch with them? They're brutal. It's like me getting a hold of Donald Trump or Joe Biden. It's not gonna happen. You know, it's just ridiculous to get in touch with anybody. It's.
You, you call the zoning office tomorrow, we'll provide them with contact information that they can provide to you as well as the previous application.
So I could possibly be several more months out. I got my, I got my answers. I'll contact zoning. I don't want to waste no more of your time.
You could possibly get it, maybe if you, if you get it right, you get it in a month, you know? Maybe somebody will come out and look at it.
Honestly, totally disgusting. My house is on easement, my deck is on easement, my pool is on easement. I'm still gonna make a little bit of a change in the footprint of less weight inside. It takes up less of a footprint than my pool did.
We, we understand.
Totally disgusting. I appreciate everybody's help. Thank you, sir.
I understand.
Again, I know I have to, I'll call Joan, Joan and Andrew have been fantastic with helping me.
Before you go, we gotta set up a date for you to come back because I, I know.
I don't know if I want to even bother coming back.
Well, would you rather have the ability to come back or would you rather not?
I'll save the money on the garage and I'll figure something out. I don't even know what to do. I'm, honestly, I'm disgusted.
Let's give you maybe a month, two months, like we were with the other applicant.
All right, whatever you want to do, I don't.
Because then you got to refile if you wanted to proceed.
Here's the thing, I'm also ordering the unit that I'm looking to put up, and I'm gonna lose all my discounts on purchases to buy the thing. So it's just, it's just snowballing. And, and it's a headache at this point in my life. I don't know if I want to keep fighting it. I'll go move up north Jersey or, I don't know.
Sir, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Just hold on. We, we want to, we want to discuss something here first, okay?
I, I appreciate. Anything we could do? I, I appreciate anything we could do and kind of ask just ours, come up with ideas I'm meant for.
Okay. So just give us five minutes. We're gonna take a five minute break.
Absolutely. I'll take a walk outside and I'll come right back in.
I'm video right now.
Yeah, yeah. All right, the recess, five minute recess is over. We're back in session again.
Can I mention something else? I also have a shed, which is within four feet of the tower, the Jersey Central Power and Light. And it's also on my survey. It's got a shingle roof. It's a wooden structure. I, I, this is what's confusing the hell out of me. It's within four feet underneath the tower that's in my yard. I built, I, I maintained it, leveled it, cleared all the weeds, cleaned everything. I built three vegetable gardens underneath there. So I didn't have to look so much at the tower. I could look at a vegetable garden. I'm pretty meticulous on how I keep my stuff. That's why I have collector cars. But my shed is within four feet of this tower.
Okay. Sir. All right. Number one, first question, did you get a permit for that shed?
It was there when I bought the house.
So we don't know if there was a permit for it. Number.
I don't, I don't know. It's never been contested.
So it, and I'm not trying to get ever Sarah with you. I'm just trying to. So everyone understands. So if there was no permit issued for that shed, then nobody would have been, the township wouldn't have been aware of it. It wasn't allowed by, the township never reviewed it. Right. Um. I'm sorry, the borough. My apology. I've been saying township all night.
Another can of worms I opened up.
No, no, no. I'm just, I'm just trying to explain.
I'm just trying to be as truthful as I could be.
There's, there's two, you got to understand the JCP and L portion, easement portion of this is, well, at least when it comes to the, the regular municipal approvals, you know, through the permitting office, that's separate and apart from the permits. Right? So you could get permission from the town to construct it, but you might not have permission from JCP and L. And the reverse end, you might have permission from JCP and L, but you might not get permission from the township. There's two different, they hold an easement on your property, meaning that they have rights and they can have to control certain parts of your property.
Totally understand that.
Right. So with that being said, what I'm gonna suggest, let me know if you, or be amenable to this, and I think the board weigh in as well. We'll carry this for thirty days, ask that you go and try to get approval from JCP and L for this. In thirty days, I think it's, what do we, June twenty second would be the meeting. The board will reassess whether or not it wants to require that you get that JCP and L approval before it votes on the application.
If I was to move the garage more forward, how much more forward would I have to go?
You'd have.
Besides fifty five feet.
You've, to be out of that easement, you're gonna have to chop up your driveway. See, cause you're, you're here, right? I'm surprised, very difficult for you to see. You're here. The easement line runs like directly basically at the end, at the end of your driveway. It's gotta be, you know, forward of that.
Yeah.
Which I don't think you want to do. Get a very nice driveway.
I'd look like Tangle Town.
Right.
You don't want to do that.
No, I won't do it. I'm serious. I won't do it. I mean, gonna devalue my house or the value of the houses in my neighborhood. I have fabulous neighbors.
Right.
I'm here for twenty four years for a reason.
And, and I'm glad you brought that up because that's also the board's concern. They have to weigh what impact your proposal is gonna have on the neighborhood. And again, this is why we make it, we're very concerned about the JCP and L easement. Because again, if there's some kind of interference with their ability to get in there and maintain the power lines, the neighborhood doesn't have power. I mean, shit, probably half the state won't have power. I don't, I don't know how these things are connected, but I would imagine probably carrying.
I'm, I'm three houses off of Oak Tree.
Okay.
They have that whole access going straight down the power line.
Right.
They won't even come no where's near my garage. They would never do. What would they have done with my pool? Tell me to take my pool down?
Theoretically, JCP and L, if they, again, I haven't seen, I haven't reviewed the easement. I have, look, I don't know what the easement, the terms of the easement are. But I know that it gives JCP and L rights to control what happens in that area. So they could very well say, oh, that pool should never been there. Got to take it out. Granted, you already did, but. Yeah, or the shed or anything in that area. I dig, no theoretically, again, I haven't reviewed, I'm with the shed.
And I, and I've gone through with them, cutting down trees and, you know, and I understand the power allergies and, you know, the world we live in now, unfortunately.
Right.
Um, so I, I get all of that. It's just, it's just common sense.
So why don't we do, why don't we do this? We're gonna schedule you to come back on the twenty sixth of June. That's a month from now. It's the, yeah, twenty sixth of June.
Twenty six? Okay. And I'll get a hold of the construction office and Joan and Andrew.
Yes. Tomorrow, tomorrow morning, you're gonna get a hold of the construction office. And they're gonna give you the special number for Jersey Central Power and Light, because it's not the one where you call up.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that.
And, and you're gonna tell them what the problem is and, and see what you can do. And come back here next month. We're gonna put you on the agenda for next month. And then we'll figure out what we're gonna do for, when.
And we'll call them five times a day.
Okay. Ten times a day.
Oh, I, I'm relentless.
Sir, I don't, I might be speaking out of term because I don't know, I'm not too familiar with JCP and L's processes. But my thought is that perhaps, even that so many people probably are in a similar situation like you are, as you just explained. There may, and again, I don't know this for sure, for certain, but I would expect that perhaps they have a document that applies to everybody who's in a similar situation that says, okay, if you're, you know, to everybody who's got a power line running through the rear yard, here's what you can and can't do. As long as you, we get something like that from you, I think we're okay with proceeding.
No, 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 absolutely. And, and.
You know?
So if I do construct something and then if there is a problem, I'm constructing it knowingly that it may have to be deconstructed. So I get that.
Right. You don't want to, do you want to really, yeah, you don't want to go build something.
I have twenty four years. I haven't done nothing. So maybe it's time. I don't know, but.
Right. Well, let's hope not.
You know, and I, and I get it. I'm not that, um, I've, I've been in construction for a long time. So I kinda, I kinda get things. All I want to do is just live. I'm getting to the point of retirement. I want to enjoy my cars. My twenty two year old drives a nineteen seventy two El Camino.
But we're, we're not, we're not against your application. We know you only need one variance.
The law is the law.
We need one variance. It's the law that we have to, we have to go by.
I, I respect that. It's nothing personal to anybody here. Believe me, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Nothing personal against you either.
No, I know that. It is what it is. You know, it's part of knowing when you buy the house, what you do, you know, but twenty four years ago, we all thought differently.
Okay. So that's, that's.
Fabulous. I'll see you on the twenty sixth. I do. I appreciate your suggestions. The only thing is, and I will be on Jersey Central.
And, and one way or the other, you'll be here on the twenty sixth first, right?
I will be here on the twenty sixth.
Okay, very good.
Godspeed, sir. And let me just real, real quick, I'll just make the voice announcement as I announced earlier. Actually, I may not have announced it earlier, but I found this application's notice to be sufficient to give the board jurisdiction over this case for this evening. Thus, um, we're gonna carry this to, what was it, June twenty six, twenty twenty four? Seven thirty PM here again at the Saraville Municipal Building. Um, no further notice will be required. That means you won't have to go publish anything in the newspaper. Not that you want to send anything out in the mail. You just have to come back. So by virtue of me making this announcement to anybody who's out there in the public, who's interested in this application, that's the next day we're gonna be considering it. You're not gonna be receiving further notice. So that's, sorry, I have to do the announcement. It's the law requires it, but that's the spiel. So we'll see you on the twenty sixth. Best of luck.
I appreciate your time.
And the last thing I want to mention to you, when you call them tomorrow, mention to them that it is the twenty sixth and, you know, there's a time limit here that we have, that the, that the board has you coming back. And, and we would like them to move on and expedite it as quickly as they possibly can. Okay?
Farmer's, I'll be on it.
Not, not that we couldn't carry it again at that point in time if.
No, 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 I don't want to keep dragging this out because, you know, the hot weather's coming and I want to get out of the sun.
But hopefully that will at least light a fire under them to hopefully get, you know, be responsive to you.
I'll figure it out. I got, I got a couple of people to call, but.
Okay.
Again, thank you, folks. Enjoy.
Thank you, sir. Best of luck.
Empty room. You're doing good. Thank you.
So Chairman, I, on this, so it's either attorney or engineer. We get an application that comes in, just talking hypothetical, same scenario. We can technically approve it or we can't approve it without JCP and L's approval. I'm just trying to, just trying to figure out what, what the law.
Like a contingency if, like, we're good if JCP and.
Look, I know, I know if we approve it and then JCP and L comes in and says, no, we want, you want that structure removed, you have to remove the structure. But are we, like you were saying, we're independent of them.
Right. So.
So is it a gamble? Like say we, we approve a structure like that.
Sort of essentially it is, right? So that, that's, I think that's why the motivation was to have him come back. And we're speaking in generalities, not just on that application, because that.
Yes, yes.
Right. Um, I've seen this done in other towns where it's, it's treated as an outside agency approval. You have to, you get approved. You gotta go get that outside agency approval in order for your, you know, variance relief to be, to be valid, right? The risk with doing that though, is as you mentioned, fool's errand. Or we're gonna approve something that they're just, just gonna throw away anyway. And especially in this circumstance where, you know, you're, you're dealing with power line easements that these are gonna be constructed within. You know, as I was trying to get to earlier, that there's a bearing on whether or not that's gonna have a substantial detriment to, to the neighborhood, right? So that's kind of why, you know, it, it kind of makes sense in this circumstance to ask him to come back. But legally speaking, it's not a bar to rendering a decision, but it's, it's just good practice to make sure that they have these things lined, all the ducks lined up in a row before you, you go through with the approval, right? So that's, hopefully that explains if I'm, if I can clarify anything, let me know.
Yeah. So, so if we have, so if we have, again, in general, we have an applicant that just like is very pushy, doesn't want to go through the process or is going through the process, just taking way too long and just wants to roll the dice. We could technically approve it.
Yes, but, but I would like, I would strongly advise that any approval like that would be conditioned upon them getting that outside agency approval at some point in time.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm, if I might add, I, I think the problem in this case is that it made its way here. Really, this is something that should have been flagged before the application was submitted. And I had a conversation with Mr. Mashinsky. He indicated he didn't, he didn't notice the Jersey Central line when he looked at the survey. If he would have noticed it on these applications, he may have handled it differently before it was scheduled before the board. So I think going forward, I, I think I'm gonna make a phone call to Jersey Central, see if I can get this resolved for myself. This way the board, I can advise you in the future if they have certain standards with, you can do this or that underneath the power line, that way you know that. And in the future, if it comes up, you'll know how to deal with it. But I just know based upon that prior application, that some of you board members may recall on Boardentown Avenue, where they had a number of structures in Jersey Central, Jersey Central wanted to see that and they restricted what could be done on that property. If you would have gone ahead and approved it and the applicant had proceeded, I, I'm not your attorney, but I, I would have some liability concerns. If you tell them they could do something and they do it and spend their own money and then they're told that they have to take it down, somebody could come back to you and say, maybe that's a, that's a board issue. You're liable.
I, I, I don't.
Possible, possible.
I don't believe so, but I just, I've researched the issue.
Anyone can sue anyone.
Anyone can sue.
Anyone can sue anyone.
Exactly.
Want to be the test case. That's where we're going.
Perception standpoint, I think that there may be some issues with some.
When you get into that situation, it's best that we just turn around and say, get the approval, get the approval first before we rule. Cause if, like you said, everybody can sue anybody, they can turn around and we're gonna have a liability here. So it's best just to turn around and say, get the approval first.
I would agree with Jerry. Maybe like, maybe there's something in the application process that can notify people if you have an easement.
Okay, no worries.
Prior approval from whoever has the easement, you know, it's something to keep it from like Jay said, getting.
And I, I think what Jay said is correct.
Yeah.
You know, before it gets to our board, let them take care of it at the zoning office. Get the approvals, then come here. That way we don't get this kind of a situation again.
And it wouldn't be any liability, like as far as like JCP and L.
What do you mean?
And, 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 and like, say, say if we granted, like take ten approvals and did JCP and L wouldn't sue us or take action against us?
No, no, you can.
This would just be.
There are many circumstances, well, it's probably require an outside agency approval as a condition. Because there's many circumstances that, I mean, not too many, but a lot that I, some that I've run into where they don't get that outside agency approval. Typically, it's usually with DEP and not a private utility company. But, yeah, and, and that just completely throws the project out the window. I mean, I've never seen an applicant in that circumstance sue the board for that because I, I don't understand what the board's liability would be. It would really just be a matter of, I mean, you get the approval from the board. You decide to act on it one way or another. We're just deciding whether or not the proposal as it's presented, you know, variance relief, that they're entitled to variance relief. It's not necessarily that we're saying, oh, you can go build a structure under any circumstances and totally rely on what we're telling you. It's more so that you have the approval under the state, under the MLUL to go do what you're asking to do on the board. That's, that's it. So, I mean, granted, all the caveat, I haven't researched the issue thoroughly enough to tell you a hundred percent, but that, those are my instinctual reactions to it at least.
And, and a million in one shot, you, you go ahead and give an approval to put the garage up. He's out in the garage one day and, you know, and Jersey Central didn't rule on it. And a wire comes down on a hurricane, a hurricane or some storm or something and there's damages, then, oh, well, the board gave us permission to do it pending, you know? Could be there.
And Jay, I think in that other case that you were talking about, I think some things had to be removed because they were there. And then when she had to go get permission to ask, it opened up the can of worms and things that were there had to be removed.
The property has restrictions on it. That Jersey Central right of way has restrictions. And unfortunately, we don't know the specifics of the restrictions. That's why I think we're being kind of conservative to make sure that the person who has the restrictions is. That's why I think we're being kind of conservative to make sure that the person who has the restrictions is okay with what's being done in their easement area.
And, and of course, the other issue is he, he bought that house knowing that those easements were there. He knew all that stuff.
He may not have known that the pool required a permit, never got it, or the shed required a permit, never got it, or maybe it was approved by Jersey Central.
Right.
We don't know that. But, but coming forwards with something new, that's, that's why the issue's coming up, just to make sure that the board is approving something that is allowed based upon the restrictions.
Right. What, permit?
The initial approvals, if there was for the pool, there was for the shed and 20 block property 30 years ago, wouldn't that paperwork somewhere?
Should, but you might not. Oftentimes municipal records get lost, destroyed, who knows what happens.
I think we did the right thing with this.
Listen, you know why you have an attorney here? To listen to him.
An attorney and an, and an engineer.
Before we check, quick question, I hate to put you on the spot. This might not be applicable requirements to residential applications, but I know in other towns, that, that I probably, we, you know, if it's a major site plan or something like that, will require that the applicant submit any deeds, easements or covenants protecting the property. Is there a similar requirement here in Saraville?
Or your major site plans and subdivisions is typically required, you'll ask for a detailed survey. Here, mom and pop applications, you basically walk in with an existing survey, you'll pencil sketch yourself what you want to do. It's not prepared by a licensed engineer or surveyor because the cost for somebody to put up a shed would be exorbitant. If you're gonna make them get a new survey and, and have everything drawn out, so.
I'm, I'm talking about existing easements, like we'll require applicants to submit like, you know, the JCP and L easement, for example, it was on a commercial lot.
Typically for your, your bulk variance applications, that's not a requirement.
Okay, okay. Just, yeah. So again, if this was like a major site plan application that moved.
You'd have all that.
So we know ahead of time whether or not this would be permitted, or at least we might have an indication.
And a major site plan, you would have an engineer prepare the plans who knows the restrictions, who knows that I need a DEP permit, I'm just not arbitrarily saying I'm gonna get it. I know based on experience that this is something that we should be able to get. So that's why it's an after the fact condition. They'll, you'll get an approval, they, they should be able to get it after the fact.
Right, it's like a double edged sword with making the, the restrictions less on residential apps.
Yeah.
And all the information. That's it, I'll get off my soapbox.
Okay, the next. Anyone from the public wish to speak on anything not related to the pending applications or litigation? Not seeing anyone from the public here wishing to speak on any of those issues. We have two resolutions. First one is 2402, Paul Sislow. Has everyone had the opportunity to read the moralization on Paul Sislow's application from last month?
Yes, sir. Yes.
It's the pleasure to board regarding this moralization.
Mr. Chairman, I move the, the resolution be approved as written.
Roll call.
Is anybody not present for that last meeting? I think everybody here was here. Yeah. Okay, Judge Jones, okay, Jones got this, okay.
Yes.
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 Second application is John and Joanna Demild from Two Williams Street. Has everyone had the opportunity to look over that moralization of that resolution?
Yes, sir.
The pleasure to board concerning that application.
I move the resolution be approved as written.
Second. We have a motion, a second roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Uh, Joan, tomorrow, would you notify, uh, Mr. Sislow that we did moralize that and he can pick up the permits? Has everyone had the opportunity to look at the minutes from last month's meeting?
Yes.
The pleasure, the work of the acceptance of the minutes from last month.
I move that the minutes be approved.
I have a motion, a second to approve the minutes of last month's meeting. Roll call. Yes.
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 Make a motion for adjournment.
No move.
Gating's adjourned.
Technically, the chair can adjourn, I'm serious, you got.